Today is Tuesday on that and the last two weeks we've consistently got rain on Monday night. So, that's another thing. We would have been ready to go the first one except it's wet.
You want to start over? We didn't have it.
Oh, we didn't have the mic on?
Mics were on.
That's okay.
I'm teasing. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Paul.
Well. Well, with our little tour with the gentleman from Martin Marietta, I'd like to come up and visit with us. Paul, can we have one of those chairs?
Morning.
Morning.
Good.
We promised those chairs aren't wired.
Okay.
Now, this has to do with the crossing north of Gilmore. That was just or asked for permitted two year roughly, how long ago?
Probably a year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago?
Soon as this process started.
Yeah, okay.
Harland was signed it. Did that give you any hints?
Oh, Harland did, so I was...
April of what?
Four, two years ago.
We've seen it, but...
About three years ago.
Long time ago.
That was really the first stage, I guess, when this whole process started.
Yeah.
Yeah, get approval so we could go across the road.
Okay, and the request was to currently to put the new crossing in now this fall with a closing the road from October 23rd to November 8th. And I think the board's concerned is that's right in the middle of harvest. I know it has to be done sometime. Can we move it from that week? Because especially with the rain we've had, we know it's, we're going to be really busy at the end of October.
I think that's our concern too is we have limited timeframe here as far as the weather goes for getting that blacktop down and making sure that it holds up and they can get the right confection and everything like that on there. From what Blacktop has told us, that we're really trying to get this done before Thanksgiving really, to make sure that it goes in right. So, just talking with all the parties involved and trying to coordinate everybody's schedules. We've got Rash construction is who we're going to have to do the great subgrade work for us where they'll take the roadway out and place and compact the stone material underneath and then coordinating blacktop in after them to get the asphalt down. Rash is also doing some stripping work for us in what's going to be that east pit. So, they're mobilizing equipment there, you know, towards that timeframe too. It's kind of where that schedule that was sent out to all you. That was developed off of our contractor's schedules as well.
So, they are going to begin to move the dirt on that section of land?
In the spr- well, in January, on the east side. We have some stuff on the west side that they're going to strip forth first and then usually in January is our plan to be stripping 10 acres on the east side in Humboldt County, so.
That was my concern if we weren't going to use it till midsummer or next summer.
No, we plan, we're planning on taking rock out of there first thing in the spring, so.
We're almost here and we had the crops all out by now, so let's come and use that. Not per se. We had more, wouldn't be a problem.
How deep is it definitely there? I mean, are you going clear?
It's about a five and a half foot excavation through there. And then we've been working with ISG who did the design on the crossing work for us and we've had Paul review those a couple of times and made some changes to those plans to make sure that, you know, initially we had it just to where it was going to cut out a 30-foot section of P-19. But there was concerns that we would have those cold joints in the asphalt right through there with just vertical drops and the subgrade. And the concern was that we would get settlement out of that and we'd have a rough road going through P-19 there. So, we stretched that out to where now we're taking, I believe, almost, I think it's 107 feet of P-19 that we're going to cut completely out of there, replace all the subgrade with macadam stone, subgrade materials, and then feather it into P-19 so that we don't have those sharp drop offs and we'll have a good roadway when we go back in with P-19. So, actually ended up being a much longer stretch of asphalt that we're going to replace. We also changed the depth of the asphalt that we're going to lay down there originally. It was designed at six inches, but Paul said that he thought there was probably about eight inches of blacktop down right now. So, in future millings, if we need to come through here, we want to make sure that what we put back for you guys wasn't going to get just completely carved out through the milling process. So, we've added nine inches of asphalt depth in that area. Our crossing is going to be 18 inches of asphalt and compacted lifts to handle our heavy trucks going over it so that we're not causing excessive pavement damage through there to try and make sure that what we put back in here has been, going to last and be a good road for them.
I like the idea of redesigning and the feathering it out. I mean, not being an engineer by any stretch, but that does make sense.
Yeah, and also with ISG, with the amount that we're taking out, there's potential that our subgrade is going to be somewhat lower than the ditch lines. So, he had some concern with our macadam stone, which is like a three-inch clean material. The water from those ditch lines would want to migrate underneath the road and cause trouble with settlement there too. So, we redesigned it to add some tiling along P-19 to cut off that water and redirect it into our pit area so that we're protecting that roadway. And we've also, I think originally it was spec'd out to go with just CMP culverts. We've changed that to concrete culverts to last longer. We've also, we're going to need a culvert that runs across the right of way, perpendicular to the right of way, so that we need to de-water in the pit on the east side of the pit. We can de-water into our west pit. So, we've got a concrete culvert that's going to go completely across the right of way to subgrade for us to get that pipe through, so.
Good design, bad timing to do all this. Yeah, well, the actual farmers are going to be affected. Isn't there a good road around there? There's going to be a few of them have to drive extra miles, but not very many.
Not too many because it's kind of split. You've got ProCoop in Gilmore and ProCoop in Bradgate. So, to say where they're going, I can't say where the farmers actually go. And visiting with Eric last week, one of his concern was the ProCoop possibly moving grain from Bradgate. So, I called them. They had no concerns at all. They said, "No, that's, just to get the project done, we can..." They would change their schedule a little bit if need be or if nothing were on the detour. But when visiting with ProCoop, he didn't have any concerns at all, so.
And the detour as it stands now, we've cut it off on the north end. I believe it goes a mile to the west and then down to the south past our quarry and then just back in right into Gilmore City.
It's all bigger.
It's all bigger. Mr. McKenna, did you introduce yourself? Both of you guys?
Both of you guys, probably should for the public record.
Rick McKenna with Martin Marietta.
I'm Darren Brown. I'm a project manager for our engineering group out of Des Moines.
Well, it's nice to meet you in person, Darren. Very comfortable to call in, yes. Yes, you are. Can I, Al, Bob, you were about as, in the room-wise, closest one to this project.
My opinion?
Yes.
You have a blacktop road a mile and a half north of this. If you detour at that corner and go east or west a mile and you have blacktop all the way around this thing. If they know it ahead of time, I don't think it's an issue. I think one mile out of the road to get her done, get it done.
And are you familiar?
It's a mile and a half north.
Well, I know you're familiar, but until Bruce and I drove the detour route last week.
So, most trucks, most trucks that come from the north right now from Bradgate, if they're going to pick up rock, turn this road anyway and go right to the quarry.
Right.
So, to have a semi truck haul grain that far out of the way, I don't think it's an issue for, what are you talking, two weeks, a month?
Two and a half weeks is what the schedule is, but hopefully it'd be done in two weeks. But it all depends on the weather too.
You know, what I'm more concerned is if you close C-49 during that same timeframe, you know, that'd be more concerned because all the trucks would go down to Cargill and Valero.
Right, well, we're talking probably more particularly to the average farmer in that area.
They're really, on each side, the quarry's on one side and you have another farmer on the other side. And there's gravel roads on north or south of either one of those farmers that farm right in the area. They should have access to their ground and gravel if they head to eat for the two farmers. I don't think it's an issue.
Well, I, you know, obviously it was good to put this on the agenda, but whether people saw... You know, we're looking at particular, is it going to be that big of a disruption for them to impede their harvest, to move their grain?
No, I don't think so. It has to be done sometime.
Well, my concern was whether you're actually going to be using it through the road or, you know... If you weren't going to be using it till next summer, I doubt it's doing in the spring, so.
We plan on moving, starting to move dirt in January second, yeah, so.
And, you know, when I talk to both you guys and I'm consensus, I mean, it is difficult and you've got a lot of factors in this. This is a major project even just a road crossing, but we've known about it. It's too bad it didn't all come together and this was done, you want to pick a good date? About the end of July. I mean, I know that's out of either of your control per se, even though project manager, but it, when we saw that this has been in the works for the better part of two years and then you get to, you know, harvest time, that was kind of a concern, you know. We don't want it to majorly disrupt anybody's harvesting operations. Harvest unfortunately keeps getting pushed back. No one likes that. But that was kind of a concern too, and I know Rick made a point and I think meant very sincerely, you want to be good neighbors, you know, the quarry, Martin Marietta, no complaint there. It's just too bad this wasn't put together and, you know, was wrapped up by now. You know, because they didn't have that timeframe there to work with, so. And it will be an inconvenience to me, but...
Be a short lived inconvenience and like they say, if you get a hard service detour, what's the big deal? I lived on a farm and I had to go pen lather on sometimes. I didn't raise Cain about it.
It's a very short lived, so it'll be a good deal after it's over. It does add up when you make lots of trips to town. Over a two-week period right in the middle of...
Probably happens once in 10 years.
Yeah.
Well, so you guys have talked to ProCoop?
Yeah, I talked to Kyle, the CEO. I called him Thursday.
Well, I talked to the manager in Gilmore and he wasn't near as much in favor as evidently the...
Well, I guess Kyle will probably have to give him a call.
Well, I'm just saying, he's the one that's, he's going to be the one that's the earer when a farmer comes in that's been out on the gravel road or on a detour.
He's the guy's butt that gets chewed on, you know.
And I guess, I'd say what Eric said. When I first came on the board, this was one of the first pieces of paper I got with plans for this. And it's over two years old and I think it's really poor timing that we wait until... And fall keeps getting pushed back before anybody that's hoping that they were combining and anything that's coming into Gilmore. And there also are they blacktoping up there on the road to Rol?
No, they're not.
Yeah, they're, that road's closed, going to have issues too.
So, my question is, as wet as corn is coming out, Bradgate doesn't have a drying dryer in there. So, if all that corn has to move, I don't want to listen to the elevator mad because we've got to move all this corn and we don't have a road to go to Rol because Rol's the only elevator that, over there, that they have a dryer or it has to come to Pioneer, so then it has to come through Humboldt or down to the rotten corner. So, but if you guys say that Kyle's good with it, I guess we'll let their manager take the earful, but I'm not in favor of closing it during the harvest and when we've had as much time as we've had to do it. That's my opinion. I'm only one-fifth of the vote.
Well, I, that's why I say I mentioned that. I mean, it always looks great, but I'm curious why this wasn't factored into... Like I said, this would have been the end of July, smooth point.
Well, I think from my standpoint on that, it was a workload issue and there were some other pressing projects. We were covering four states out of our office and there were more pressing projects at the time that were projects that we were needing to get done.
Yeah, and it's, that and contractors, we deal with similar things, you know. Expediency is always sometimes a tough thing to accomplish. But yeah, the timing, you know, and nothing against Bob and I not disagreeing. It's, you know, it is a good detour route as far as detours go, but then he isn't farming anything that is affected by that either. And, you know, we don't know the ramifications, if it's going to really blow somebody up moving their grain or... I don't know. It's too bad the people that wouldn't be directly affected and that have to be the folks that need to get across, you know, the closed portion that we're here to say something. I mean, we're conjecturing it and if it's obviously no huge inconvenience, fine. You know, that's why we're looking for the huge inconvenience factor. Saying that correct, Bruce? I mean, we're, because of the timing part and the inconvenience, if it didn't affect anybody, you know, we're not trying to stand in the way of Martin Marietta.
I don't think it's going to affect somebody no matter when.
Yeah, and if, you know...
If we think it matters too late, then we're running into some issues with the asphalt like there.
Right, and I understand that. No one wants to do a winter project period, no matter what it is. You know, I'm not in favor of doing any kind of construction work in poor weather and cold weather and that difference. And I know you guys sincerely want the project, you know, re-engineer the project. It's going to be a good project and you have a concern from the future of the road once it gets done. That's much appreciated foresight of the putting the big tile through if you need new water and not going back in and, you know, having to redo something a few years down the road. A good planning on it except for the time. I think with that short of a detour, though, I'm familiar with that area over there.
You're only going a couple of miles out of the way, a mile and a half. You go over a mile or you come back, come back down on the ankle road.
Yeah, it's a couple more jobs for the trucks to slow down. Because we're talking trucks and they're again not, you know, exactly sure who, if any, one of them is that majorly affected. Not everyone has trucks, wagons. And that's a little slightly, you know, consider a tractor speed versus wagon. You got a comment, Bob?
I do. Gilmore City takes basically slithings, what they take through their elevator. They do take some corn when it gets dry enough below 17%. So, I doubt there's going to be any corn right of way hauls to Gilmore City. Most of the people that haul to Gilmore City is slithings and there are a few wagons like you talked come to Gilmore. Other than that, most of the corn either goes to Pioneer or Bradgate or Rol, Rol, Rutland. And I think most of that semi hauls a lot of it anymore. And I don't think there's too many people north of Gilmore that haul corn to Gilmore on wagon. Most of that goes to Bradgate in the first place.
Appreciate that insight because that's the concern.
Well, I know the few farmers that are north of town basically haul wagons and they go to Bradgate with their corn. The only one inconvenience would be like Bruce said, ProCoop having to haul the wet corn out somewhere, you know. Now, they would have to make that detour one mile round, an extra mile to haul their wet corn from Bradgate to Rol or to Pioneer, to the dryer. So, there'd be a couple of miles more.
Well, the good thing is we got some rain. We got rain because the detour route on Highway 3, we had a lot of, you know, what people when they were cutting across the road on the gravel and people calling saying, "I can't see out here because the road's so dusty." Well, rain can have dust for a few days and all I say is if it goes, then you better get to digging and I'll forward your guys' cell number on the 8th if it isn't done.
Yeah, make sure that, it may be better to check with the manager at Gilmore City.
Well, that would be...
I mean, we like to work with Martin Marietta. We use your stone. They're telling me a lot. Just had some concerns, so hopefully if we have future projects, we try to avoid fall. Spring isn't so bad, you know, you've got a few planters and making stuff, but fall, there's a lot of trucks go back and forth and wagons and tractors and...
And tempers get short when it keeps getting pushed back on that.
Quite often that guy in the combine is waiting for that truck to get back.
That's my concern and I guess I hope we all are on the same page.
And hopefully 10 years from now, the issue is they're moving their main plant and everything into Humboldt County because then they don't have to cross the road anymore. And the rock is still cheap.
Well, appreciate you coming in. Wanted to avoid some of our concerns. Because that was one of the questions that I had is if you're actually going to be using that crossing.
Yeah, and I called just to verify that again this morning. I said, "That's still our plan," but it was, so.
Well, whatever you guys can do, like I said, the timing on things like this, and I know there's a lot of factors, you know, for future things that have affected like this, really be able to get it, you know, where you wouldn't even be here to have this issue. As I said, at the end of July, we wouldn't even think twice about doing it. And I think...
Some other part, please. Some other part of the country might have the issue, somebody might have the issue and can't just work in two months only, a whole year. There's more than one state, one more county, one more farmer. There's a whole bunch of factors considered.
And then you get a contractor to come and do it. It's such a small project. That's the thing, you know, it's not really that large a project.
It's inconvenient, you're driving here in Minneapolis on the interstate. You don't like it, but you live with it.
Just want to make sure we get science out on the road, trucks turning ahead.
Just wanna make sure we get science out on the road, trucks turning ahead.
How is that gonna work? So you're gonna cut across the road, the trucks going back and forth in your quarry, are they stopping? Because I've had people calling saying, "Oh, is it a four-way stop? Is it just them stopping?" That's what I thought.
Yeah, I've had that question too and I've told people.
We've had different, actually I worked up in Mason City for a few years and there was a mine up there. And there was actually two crossings and it worked well up there. In fact, it was a railroad track right there. Lot of stuff going on and you get the big trucks hauling across, they just come up. But if you see somebody coming, you sit there. And that's not that busy of a road. I don't know how many cars travel, a couple hundred cars a day or something, so.
They have targets and part of the plan is targets, timed crossings and then targets appropriately set. So if they can't see those targets, if it's raining or anything that limits visibility, or if they see anybody inside the target, they can't go. That's part of their own in-house.
Well, they used to do it down in South Twenty Second in Fort Dog. So I'm pretty sure we can do it out in wide open stretch of county or blocked out, but I didn't know. So I thought I'd ask.
No.
We encouraged them to go under the road. We pushed for under the road, I did. And, and, and this is where we're at to get over the road. We've studied the road site distances. They're gonna be what? They measured it nine-six high as the I set, where the UD operator's sitting at nine-six or whatever. And they can see, if they can see, that's why they're proposing targets on either side. And if there's anybody inside of that target, they sit until they get high.
All right, Martin Area is a very seem-to-be conscious company. Very, so that's not something we're gonna have to have a current discussion on.
All right, the last thing we wanted to do is that we can't, is a cross talk.
We appreciate that.
Yep, that's a good point. You know, it's all good except the timing and maybe just do a little more checking. And are we agreeing to this timeframe then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion or?
No.
Is it just?
It's set, we're just not gonna.
Just discussion.
Just for discussion, if I may go, so.
After talking to Eric, we just wanted to come in and open it up.
Well, by some of these reasons, I've had people call about the stop line and I told them, no, you know, the trucks are gonna be.
That's good though, that's a little bit of conversation on how the protocol of crossing it alleviated some concerns, but.
It's good.
Go with our blessing.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for good mannering, so it happens quickly.
Absolutely.
Good luck with it.
The good news is if they hit mud, you suppose they can find a salesman that will sell them rock?
We have one.
Paul.
My eye for his death.
He is a least-lay, that gives him excuse to come back in.
Really, there isn't many farmers north of town that would come that way. It's actually the big semi trucks that are gonna be hauling rock or hauling grain.
Wet corn from Bradgate.
They get two miles.
All right, so.
Appreciate your insight on that.
I get most to go in.
You gotta get it done.
Do you need claims quick?
Oh, we're supposed to be in.
I know, but ninety-four, you can at least hand box into them.
All right.
I make a motion on the claims that I got. I don't know if they're the right numbers. Eight twenty-two, nine fifty-five, eighty-five, general.
What'd I get, second step?
And the two sixty-one, one seventy-one, forty-seven drainage.
What'd I get, second step?
Okay, we have a motion, second drainage, or claims, excuse me. Hall of favor?
Aye.
Claims are approved.
That way they can at least start writing, fixing, band-aiding.
Motion for drainage, second.
First and second, doing the drainage. Hall of favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'll get this signed.
Those were the right numbers? Oh, I looked to make sure we didn't have any handwritings on there, but I didn't. I put my five bucks out for the flower fund, so I don't forget.
I thought they were paying Rick Popper to come in and say, "Huh, I didn't know what you're doing there."
Now they have, they put five bucks.
When you die, we have flowers for you.
Thank you.
The way they have the.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that.
That went very nicely.
No, it is, it's fantastic. I'm glad you all stood and respected the flag because they too didn't sit knee down, so.
So we don't want to go down that road?
So what, on schedule today, so.
It's about drainage, yeah.
No, it's true.
I figure if we still have that box sitting here after drainage, somebody in there would be a little owly.
Yeah, it's a good thought.
Pete, I hope that, I tell Pete what's wrong.
He does, he's good at it.
Oh, yeah.
Don't worry, we'll get time to remind you down the road.
Well, it's not a trip on your Ford.
We're talking old sprinkles again tonight, tomorrow.
Rick, you are, mud?
Yeah.
Morning, actually, yeah.
Can't get easy coffee?
Yeah, I'll be okay.
Anybody else care for coffee some morning?
We got a flower fund, we got a coffee fund too, there's fifty cents to it.
So, okay, I need to donate my money.
Charge it, have to, charge it. Yeah, we'll just take it off your interest.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
Give you a buck.
Where's your cup at?
We don't want to get poor.
Oh, they're over on Bruce's desk and then at the end of the night, he just kinda collects some money like a poker.
We don't want to get poor coverage from the paper.
Oh, you won't get poor coverage.
More than you want. You won't get poor.
Me and you, we agree.
What's your? He was here just a minute.
Right there.
Oh, there you are, okay. I looked in the chair and you weren't here.
I didn't know, no particular business of mine, I guess, on there, but.
Yeah, I guess there is.
Are you gonna go to? Here, nothing. I got a head shake, no.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying. Maybe we will take his thing first so he can go home.
I don't care, it does not bother me.
No, go ahead. Bob, do you want to come up and speak on your concerns?
Well, I can. You may not want to hear this, but I will. September of two thousand sixteen, you voted to go ahead and lower the interest rate on DD two from six to three percent. But told us at that point in time that we probably have our money within thirty to ninety days. That didn't happen. It's been over a year right now. According to my figures that I have for interest rates, interest on the main is like a hundred and forty-seven thousand some odd dollars. Interest on lateral L was two hundred and forty-five thousand. The last reclassification that we had in the mail, do I presume is correct? I don't know. I don't know if these numbers are correct, I haven't seen them. But using the percent that goes by percent of total in here, I'm looking at about fifteen thousand in refunds just for myself. Four and a half percent interest I paid for my loan to operate my operation. That's seven hundred and some dollars last year that I paid extra interest on that you have my money for. You know, it's not a small number. Because when you start talking about the dollars involved in this, there's quite a few dollars involved. If this was a normal bill from a normal company that you deal with, they would have gave you thirty days notice. And then you paid one and a half percent interest after that until you paid your bill. We haven't done that yet. But I'm getting tired of having to come to these meetings, talk to this process, trying to figure out how to get my money back, you know. It's due to DD two landowners and it's time we get this done. Now, I don't know where we go from here. I don't know how much money we've collected on DD two through the process. You know, have any of the warrants that are already paid back to the county or to Popper's firm? I don't know that answer either. But, you know, those are all questions. Do they get paid before we got repaid back for our interest? I don't know. I can't find that information out without asking you guys. So here I am asking these questions, you know. I have a worksheet that I have made up for my own self. If you want a copy of that, I can give you that.
Sure, I'd take a copy of that.
Then you'll be thirty days' notice, seriously. There's your notice. Because I, I made these up. And this is just my figures that I made, you can, I'll do that hinge for you.
No problem. These numbers are probably based on, do you know?
A spreadsheet that we got toward the end of the project.
But do we know how many, how much of the warrants are held by the county?
I do not know that. All I know is I was using the spreadsheet that I had that involved a total dollar project. It looked something like that. Total dollar project, told you how much total it was per five hundred and twenty-five thousand. It was on the axle for lateral L and, you know, each, each one had their own totals. And I was using those totals, those figures, which may not be right, but that's all I had.
Yeah, we were only able to lower the interest rate on the county held warrants. So that, that will change these figures some.
I'm sure it will.
But we will be working on it and we are gonna get it straightened out.
But like, working how fast?
We're gonna work.
We were talking about that.
As hard as we can to get it, to get it done.
Well, because I've talked to enough landowners out there that if you guys don't, I mean, legal action can come back at you. You know, I'm sorry, but it's, it's time to get this done. If we have to, we maybe need to hire another drainage clerk. You know, we've got a couple engineers, we only have one drainage clerk, maybe we need a part-time one. Look at all the projects we've got going on the last five years. You know, is it overload here or is it overload here? I don't know where the overload is. You know, this has to be solved sometime, you know.
Well, we had Jana in this morning and tried to discuss how the whole thing goes about because of the fact that the people that have paid justly deserve their money back. The people that haven't paid, they haven't, so there's a two-way street. You gotta be able to figure out and we just don't have a vault full of money that we just bought.
But the ones that haven't paid are paying you six percent interest.
I understand all that and all, but we, you still have to go through, chase the right figures and.
The ones that, what did you just say? I'm sorry, back up.
The ones that have not paid are probably on a loan?
Yeah, they're like the square percent loan.
It's been lowered to three.
It has been lowered.
For what they can.
They're lowered to now, so I didn't know that one.
That part we did, they did get done. The warrants got changed from six percent to three percent.
Okay, but the people that owe money on their land taxation, if they did not pay their taxes and they had to borrow money from the US county, what are they paying for interest rate?
If I did not pay it over twenty years.
How much?
They put it over the twenty years.
It's six percent.
Or fifteen years wasn't.
But it's six percent though.
It was, now Jana was telling me that the first payment would have been the six percent totally across the board. The consecutive ones following would have lowered the Humboldt County held ones to three percent. That's what she was saying.
Because that wasn't the original motion that was made that day, it was to lower the interest rate that was being collected or charged to the project.
We can't drop interest that someone else owns the.
No, I, I believe you're gonna get a refund on the county held warrants.
Okay.
From six percent to three.
So how much do the county hold this project versus anybody else?
That's what Jana's gotta figure out.
We'll push hard on this, see if we can get it cleaned up.
You weren't the only one that called last week. I, I had one or two and I think Eric had one or two. And all, all I can say is, is unfortunately, Jana's running that office and anybody that comes in for today's business, they have to take care of it today. And I'm not believing, or saying that we're any less at fault because we sure have dropped the ball. But we're trying to continue operation and we're trying to make everything and, and figure out the easiest way to make it work. And I apologize again, like we did last time when you came in and brought it to our attention. We still have dropped the ball and we're trying to get it figured out.
Well, it's an ongoing process and if I don't keep coming here, it's fifteen thousand dollars out of my pocket that I'll never find out.
I understand, and I'd be upset about it too. I get mad when I lose fifteen bucks, so. Well, I do, you know, if the fuel at one place is, is five cents higher, I'll go across the street because if you put a couple hundred gallons in, I might as well keep the thirty bucks and give it to somebody else. That's the way I look at it. I'm in business for me.
And like I said, I borrow one money to operate on and you take four and a half percent interest. I'm paying to do this and I got money set in here, so, I mean, it's time to clean this up.
I agree with you. Well, we, like Rick said, we are, we're gonna push hard to make it happen and I apologize again.
All right.
Get it done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob.
And we do like to see you, you know.
Can I start having it for DM? You know, if I didn't have left, I could get it for DM maybe or?
You'll have to work that with somebody else. Rick, you're the head.
Probably not.
All right, we can put you on the flower fund.
You want me to be six foot under that?
No, no.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to DD eleven sub five to accept petition for improvement. Last week McClure was here and discussed what they, we hired them to look at the projects and give us their opinion. Have they responded with that letter yet? No, I don't think they were gonna get it to us quite this soon, so. I know we've all had time to think about this and we're waiting for McClure to get back with that formal letter of their opinion of the project.
Wasn't the, that was not an agenda item last week. That was informational.
Yep.
Just to clarify, that was not in drainage, it was after the meeting.
It was like a work.
It was a work session and it, it was not, the only thing on the agenda was that we were all here to listen to their explanation. So just to clarify, that was not an agenda item.
So what was, what transpired or anything or, I mean, when?
Nothing transpired.
They gave us their opinion and they, they had done a little bit of looking at it. And they were going to formalize a letter to us giving their opinion of cost to the, the lateral for the ditch lateral, but I can't think of the number off the top of my head. The open ditch that would have to be widened, improved to carry the extra water if we did go this ultimate route. And also the numbers that they were, what they looked at is the, the one pipe from Mansky's proposal was only like a three-quarter inch coefficient versus the one inch. So they had a little bit of variance there.
Right, so that, that was a kind of a get up to speed on where they were. That's what we had the discussion about last week. But in the midst of that discussion, yes, and they were going to send a letter. So this is not a formalized report because that was why we had the discussion last week. But I believe the agreement at that time was to put it off, not today, but a week from today to actually make the decision of petitions. So I was kind of surprised to see this on here as far as accept petition for improvement. Because, correct me if my memory is out.
Sixteen, that's right.
This is a different one.
This is a different one?
This is different than what was.
Oh, this is different than that, okay. So that one then, I guess what, the letter we're supposed to get was a little more of their findings from our discussion last week.
This is, okay, I'll go, okay, I was confused on that too then. This is a petition for a half-inch drainage coefficient improvement, starting at the south outlet of the main tile in Latuska Township, section thirty-six and running southeasterly to terminate at the Rutland Township, section six and seven.
In a nutshell, this is the same proposed original project down to a half-inch drainage coefficient.
Yes, that's what it is.
Maybe I'm wrong.
That's how I read it.
Okay, I don't, you know, I, I do actually want to oversimplify it. I do. I don't say I don't, I do. So this is, this petition, which is the same project, that original project that's out there and has been done is an inch coefficient.
Correct.
That we have information on, that is finalized.
The report that's been submitted.
The report that's been submitted is one inch, this is the same thing at a half inch coefficient.
Correct.
Is this fair time? And probably in the course of all of the drainage discussion we've had, some of us, I have probably asked Rick or anyone else that deals with. And probably in the course of all of the drainage discussion we've had, some of us, I have probably asked Rick or anyone else that deals with this, normally do a half-inch, an inch coefficient work, do you not, when you're putting together a project?
Yes, the petition originally submitted specifically called for a one-inch coefficient.
Okay, and you did that.
And that's what we did.
So you didn't do the half-inch one?
No, that's right.
Technically?
Right.
You did not technically do that?
Right, and you, in our files, I know we have what a half-inch size would be, cause that's what we do when we calculate it, we calculate it. Just be formalizing that.
Okay.
To a half-inch.
So the cost shouldn't be a whole lot to the district, cause you've already asked...
A few hundred dollars at the most.
Alright.
For that?
If I may, the two thousand eleven petition by Carl Pearson was for a one-half inch coefficient. So if you look at the preliminary plan, I would assume all the specs are there, basically it's looking at cost.
Cause that's held for ten years, right?
Yes, it's good for ten years.
Ten years.
And you said that was eleven, Carl?
Yeah, the petition on two thousand eleven.
Certainly within the ten-year time.
Okay.
So you'll just be getting back into that and verifying the size.
I, well, I would, I would say for that discussion and rather than further it, and as much discussion as there's been about all this, yes, I'd make a motion to accept the petition to get the actual data for the half-inch coefficient. That's my motion. Go ahead with the petition.
Is there a...
What's that?
You have hiring an engineer or two.
What's that?
Hire the engineer also, is one...
Is it?
Well, you can add that to your motion, we can do a second one after we get through this process.
Well, given what we know, and we know a lot about this, and we just had a minor discussion on it. Let me, well, first I wanna ask this question. Did you do the original?
Yes.
I'm talking the original, that is, two thousand eleven?
Yes.
Did you do the original two thousand eleven?
Yes, the initial report.
Given that, then I would also include in my motion to hire Jacobson Westergaard as the engineering company to complete the half-inch report, half-inch coefficient report for this petition.
Okay, so we got a motion for, to accept the petition and to appoint Westergaard, Jacobson Westergaard as the engineers. I need a second, a second, a second from Carl. All in favor?
I vote. My question is, is he completing or is he just gonna update from the two thousand eleven?
Update. I am not sure which word to use because...
Well, that's why I wondered how...
Because I can take the most recent report and just change half, one inch to half inch and change the materials, so it's kind of a hybrid. I will, I will pull out the one from two thousand eleven and hopefully I can just update the process.
If we're able to use the eleven for ten years, to me, then we haven't, like you said, all it's gonna be is just transposing some numbers and we're basically... So that's...
That's why, because of the fact of the existing information.
Yes.
Involved.
I probably won't have over two hours in it, I might have a technical a little more time.
And obviously, what you'll do, you don't have to decide this, is get it as absolute accurate as possible with the information that you already have.
Do you all have it for us next week?
Yes.
Does that also include reclassification on the one-half inch? So individual owners know what the cost is.
Should be just plugging in a different number than what we've got electronically, so, um, yeah.
Well, yeah, you could probably do the math pretty quickly, cause if you went from one inch to half and it's a twenty percent reduction, you can just take your one-inch number and reduce it by twenty percent or whatever, so it should be fairly simple.
Yes.
According to this, you're not going into section six or seven?
Now, this is the original.
The original petition.
Well, the way you usually do it, and I'm not trying to make any more muddy water, you usually have the half-inch and the one-inch so that you can see compared apples to apples.
Yes.
Are you asking him, you don't want anything to do with the one-inch, you're just gonna stay with the half-inch?
I wanna know the cost.
I reckon it's one inch.
Yeah.
So we have the one-inch and you want him, okay.
One, legitimate, hard, scientific, fat, report, half-inch, just like we had the same with the one-inch, that's the petition. Let's take it.
Any more discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, anything else for some drainage, Trish?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Now, this, you said this doesn't, this, this petition doesn't go into section six or seven or something?
It does. It's exactly the same as what was submitted before.
Okay.
This is the, the reading's here.
Yeah, okay.
Is this one the original then?
Yes.
This one's not like the original. Cause the original goes clear down to the highway.
I think that was, I think the other one, the newer one was pulled off of a, of an old drawing. The one you're looking at on the right there is the one we prepared, so... I think it, if I'm not mistaken, was some of that tile extended further southeast after the initial construction? Am I thinking of the right one?
I would not know that.
Okay.
I would not know that.
At any rate, we're looking at the route that we had on the...
This is the same route as...
Yeah.
That's the same, only the differential is the half-inch coefficient versus the inch.
Yeah, that's the difference.
I think there's a little difference in where some of the improvement perhaps.
What the wording is.
Yeah, cause it's showing here.
I mean, they're going into six, seven.
At the road and up here, it don't show it coming on down and into the other section.
Well, it does, it says main extension, that was not, this is an old, old map.
Right, an old, old map that was right there. Yeah.
Alright.
I just wanna know where it's going.
Good question.
Too many maps.
Anything else?
Got my head spinning.
You got, you got something you wanna add? We're always looking for more.
I've just been updating on a couple other things.
Oh, sure, we look, updates are good.
Okay. DD two lateral M, Holland project they're working on right now. I stopped there this morning coming in and they, they asked me how much rain you guys got and I didn't know. The board had washed off the end of the pipe that they had in the ground and some dirt got in it. We're in the process of taking out enough pipe to clean that out this morning. I'm glad we got them on the job. I mean, they're, before they even knew I was there, I heard them talking about taking pipe out and getting it cleaned out, be sure they got it. Getting extended handle shovel so they could reach the last bit. So I'm confident they'll get it taken care of. They put in a temporary drive north, on the north side of the gravel road where they're working. And I was there when the, two pipes, two trucks came a pipe on them. First one tried to get in the drive, the back end of the trailer sunk in and off the edge of the dirt drive. I'm not sure what they're gonna do, they're almost gonna hatchet on some bites to get that truck out of there. Gary Jensen was gonna try and, when he got back this weekend, trying to harvest the beans north of the road, but I'm sure it was too wet. Bob Nellis, last week, told me he was gonna call Gary and see if they'd help a heap combine it for him, but he wasn't able to do it. So they're gonna be destroying some beans as they go through there now, just because weather conditions didn't allow it. Uh, they're probably not gonna do the road crossing today. They wanna get it back in order, get the pipe all cleaned up, be right next to the road and ready to cross. So they'll probably cross tomorrow or the next day to gravel road. You've got barricades at both ends of that mile to keep people out, so I, I think they're taking care of it properly. I did get the final wetland determination for that project. There's three in the general vicinity of the project, but not in the watershed. So we ended up with zero wetlands in the watershed for lateral M. So that's good news. That was one, that was basically the last thing Mike was concerned about is that we didn't need to deal with. I had enough information to know that the most we were gonna have to deal with was one acre. Then I sent NRCS the watershed boundary so they could see that those wetlands were not included in the watershed. So that took care of that. I'll be checking on DD three before I leave the area today. They had a couple questions they wanted me to look at in the field. DD fours, they're, they're trucking along on four, making good progress on that.
I got a question on three.
Yeah.
That crossing on the blocktop south of Thor. How much height is that? I went out, looked at it, and it looks like a pipe coming out of a bank, the water comes out and drops this much into the ditch.
I thought it was only about a foot.
It looks to me like it's two feet high.
And it, I'll have to go back to the profile to say, I know it was at least a foot, I don't know how much more than that.
Well, but when we put it back in, we wanna put in the right height.
Absolutely, yes. And that's, that structure is, I like it, it starts going one way and, but the outlet is to the north instead of the east. I'm quite ingenious designer, but, yeah, it's gonna have to be taken care of.
Okay.
What else?
Have we heard any more back from iron bird field crossings?
No, haven't heard any more.
I mentioned to Rasmusson that maybe he could use a tank car, cause you can get them in nine foot, how long they are, they're nine footers.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I've seen it done before, yeah. It's not as strong with its, it's not corrugated, but, but those are usually heavy enough metal that...
Yeah, they're like half-inch steel.
Yeah. So they just, they get the strength from the thickness of the steel. Yeah, he maybe finds something.
To avoid any thing down the road, which initially sounds like a good idea, that is an acceptable...
Yes. Yeah, it's got, it's really, really deep or something, we'd have, we, we maybe have doubts about it, but this isn't a really deep section of ditch. The only equipment through there is probably be the combine and, well, maybe some ice with grain on it, I'm not sure where he unloads, but...
But it is a viable option.
Yes, it is, I've seen it done.
And obviously, now that we know all about that, it's, it's a cost saving, hopefully, for the first one.
Yes.
Well, his only comment to me when I visited with him last week was, he just wants to make absolute positive depth. It's supposed to be, uh, because he doesn't want in ten years or in five years that the district says, well, it's, no longer meets the standard, so I just spent whatever the number is and now I gotta pull it out or my kids gotta pull it out or, cause it was at the wrong height, it was at the wrong, whatever. So I said we would make absolute positive assuring that everything was on the up and up, so...
And we have all the old design documents, I mean, we know right where their bottom's supposed to be and have already calculated the size.
Well, I still think that if you look at the pictures that he had of the existing one, it's almost like those things weren't the tongue and groove because it's starting to push them and they weren't installed proper, properly before, so that's the reason that they're pushing. And the, the volume of water going through there is, you know, you can see on the other side of the ditch what it's done to the ditch there.
Oh, yeah, and you, you start restricting flow and it makes it more like a water shoe there to cause erosion, so...
And you didn't get him his papers, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, that, the day, somebody emailed me.
I did.
Yeah, yeah, within an hour he had them.
Good. Okay, do we have anything else on drainage?
Oh, we have the start of DD two lateral M, just a, just a few minutes of video.
Okay.
I just got one question whether you're pro or con against this five of eleven. We need some kind of a timeframe here, knowing what's going on the sixteenth and what's going on the twenty-third. Do we have anything like that, is there anything on paper or? We just heard there's a meeting on the sixteenth, I don't even know what it's about. Twenty-third?
No, I don't, no, I don't think there's any kind of meeting, they were supposed to have this information to us.
Uh-huh.
I guess they're just gonna send it, paper, paper to us.
Are people gonna get notified in time so they have time to make a decision here? Cause I've been a couple of these meetings, we haven't got paperwork until like on Saturday and the meeting was on Monday. That's not probably the greatest plan here for this thing, where everybody's spending a lot of money here and everybody needs to think about it, you know? You know, I, I just wonder if there's a timeframe or a schedule.
Well...
We noticed for the twenty-third should have gone out.
You had notice on the meeting for the twenty-third.
I have not got anything.
You have not?
She said just...
Okay, alright. And at that time, is that when we're gonna decide?
Yeah.
The one, what's gonna happen?
We're gonna try to make a decision that day, what, what option we're gonna look at.
Okay, alright, that's, that's better enough.
Okay, let me think about this. I think what I sent out that for the twenty-third was, I got to open my eyes again.
The reclassification.
Just the reclassification, right? Because, what was it, we were holding on the engineering to, or, yeah, on the preliminary to follow up with the McClure one at the same time? Is that when we hired, I don't, I'm still...
Next week, we have to decide if McClure's to officially, we took the information and advisement to give them an answer.
Whether we pursue it deeper.
Whether we go any further with that, that's a week from now. The twenty-third is notice, then you would've gotten notice on the reclassification.
Yeah.
That is going forward. I do not believe there's any vote on anything outside of reclassification on the, between now and the twenty-third.
So the twenty-third is not when this time will be decided, okay?
No, but it is this reclassification.
What's our timeframe here, how long do the windows we have to look at from the twenty-third on until this is decided?
Well, we gotta get it done, cause if it's gonna get done as a project, we need to get it up for bids and stuff.
Yeah.
So we're gonna keep pushing forward.
We have a petition except on the twenty-third.
That's what we re-class, carry on and...
I think we should have all of our, all of our information will be to us by the twenty-third.
Uh-huh.
And then as trustees, we're gonna have to make a decision which, which route we're gonna go.
Uh-huh.
After that. So it'll probably be two weeks after the twenty-third, I would think we should be able to make a decision.
Twenty-third would be, the thirtieth would be the sixth of November.
Do you have to send out a notice on that one too, or not? So we'd have to have ten days?
Your letter that comes out, Trish, is that gonna include everything, all the prices of everything and, uh...
Well, I think it's gonna have to, even though it's gonna be totally confusing.
Yeah, it will be.
Yeah, see, we'll have to, when you submit, when you submit your thingamajigger, your...
Updated report?
Your updated report, we'll have to accept it, right?
Yeah.
And then do forty days?
Technically, that's like forty days.
Yeah, then another forty days?
Well, no, that's, I guess frustrating to say, but...
And I could, are you, you're gonna have it? You're gonna have it ready next week?
Yes.
So we can accept it inside of forty days from next week?
Yes.
Then, I can check with the code too, but I think if you, you still have to accept it even though it's just updating it, right?
Yes.
And still do the forty days.
Oh, there's our answer.
But that still gives us time towards the end, end of the year that we can still get it put out to bids, hopefully, if it all comes to pass. But I think what he's knowing, he don't wanna be sitting in the combine on whatever day it is in first part of November and all of a sudden, we're having this meeting that...
I just want everybody to be notified and everybody have a fair chance of this and that's what's very important here, cause, uh, everybody needs to know what goes on here.
Yeah.
Well, we're all...
We're trying to compile all the information so we gotta, you know...
I don't understand all this forty day stuff because this thing has been applied for, or petitioned for years almost, so...
Probably where the mistake was made is they should've, we should've done a half-inch and a one-inch at the same time.
Probably where the mistake was made is they should have, we should have done a half inch and a one inch at the same time. And that was just something that never got done.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm for that guy.
Okay, thanks, thank you, David. Good question, good question.
This could be the most confusing one that I've ever sat in, most confusing.
It is. Just, just a quick summary, on YouTube, if you go to YouTube and Jacobson Westegard, you can find your projects that we've done drone on. And this is, this'll show you the start of lateral M, the apron place, the elbow, you'll see the wrapped joints. It's just a matter of minutes here. It's not, not much time at all.
A long, bad dream.
We've found more uses for that drone after we got it. It's just amazing.
Good for you guys.
Well, it's just fabulous. We'd love it.
Oh, for the love of.
Oh, no, it's not gonna work now?
I gotta backdoor it, cause we can't go to YouTube for your better now.
I'm getting all the news while.
I didn't know about the dolphins.
Okay, here we go.
There we go. That, I wanted you to see that, because you can see how we place aprons. It outlets at the toe of the bank. That's what we want. And it's aimed downstream. You can see how much downstream is on.
And gets it from back loan at the water side?
Yep, yep. And it doesn't cause erosion, it doesn't affect the bank. You can see the elbow, it's not a very big elbow.
No, it's not very big, much of a bend.
But that gets us, so we're going then straight north and south, so that when we get into the field to the north. And this was late last week, well, mid last week, actually.
Good soil.
Before it started raining. Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. It is good soil.
They're using the, how far down is that then?
Uh, it's about, right, at the deepest point there, it's about nine to ten feet to full line. As they get up towards the road, it's about probably eight feet to full line, I'd say. And then it gets deeper as we go north. There's a kind of a hill we have to go through.
That looks like, what is it, thirty inch or thirty six inch pipe?
Yeah, thirty six.
Thirty six.
Yep, yep. But that just, it just gives you a good bird's eye view of what's going on there. Yeah, there it is upstream. Like I say, you see each pipe joint wrapped. We're just so glad Holland is involved here, cause they're doing a great job.
And this in field that.
Kenny Days. This is all in Kenny Days right there.
He has the opportunity to get that load of that corn out of there.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. Thank goodness that timing worked out, yeah. The corn that you see gone, he was able to complain, so, yeah.
So you're using that kind of as a stating area, then next where it's actually gonna.
Yes, yes, yes.
So when you gave the report this morning, they were, had buried.
They're up the road.
Road and that part, and they had some dirt wash in?
Yes, yeah.
That, you could do that all the time?
I, it's just great. It's, and we just put it on YouTube under our name. You can see other county's projects if you want to, but it's listed by Durange District. And it's just, we've used it several times already where the, we were comparing final conditions to how it was before the project. We've been using it for that several times.
That's nice too.
Yes.
Just our DD three? No?
Yes.
It is?
I believe so, yes.
That's the start of it. Started where they started to clean.
Yeah.
Yes, before they started cleaning.
Yeah, and you'll be doing, you've given the, go ahead for an hourly cleanout of the lateral that comes in at the upper end of it too, so.
So Rick, does your drone have the ability, if it's flying along here and it notices a tin whistle along there, do you have the ability to?
GPS mark them?
GPS mark that so that they knew?
Definitely.
That's the hardest part for us to get a partner out there.
Yeah, you know, well, we, we try and relate it to the station by, by the picture, by what it looks like. I'm thinking one in Palo Alto County, we had pipe in the bottom of the ditch, just laying in the ditch. And we could figure out what station was at from where we were on with the drones like, so. Yeah, that's a whole nother category of drones with GPS built in.
Well, I would still like to see the, before we get, and I'm not sure the number with Dial Erickson's and, and Harlan. When we attach to that. I'd like to figure out what we're, what we got down below from the cemetery down to the river. Other than walking that, and yesterday, walking, I was mowing up in my building up there. Those noceums were vicious.
Oh, they were terrible.
But I'd just like to see.
Were you asking like before they even start the project?
Well, I'd like to see what that, where all of our water coming down from the cemetery down to the river at that outlet. There's a lot of trees and stuff in there and that's technically not ours. That would be the city's, wouldn't it?
Yes.
So I, I guess someday I'd like to figure out how are we going to handle, cause we take care of our trees and our ditches.
Yes.
That's something you could.
Ditch by February there Friday night, we had got a route representative on us the phone after all the water went in on Friday. I was kinda surprised it didn't work that well.
But I'm telling you, look, the river's got a lot of trees, two to three feet.
No doubt, no. This might be, this be it before.
Yes.
But it relates to the project, obviously.
Yes, yes.
That would be nice, cause it means walking out there.
Oh, yeah.
You can actually see it better.
This is awesome.
I, I got another question for you on Nell's Peterson job, main six where they, where they started at the blacktop and went in the east, you know? They got, they got that all done.
Yep.
And it's full of water. I mean, I stopped and looked at it last night. It, it's this much over the top of the four foot main that goes through there.
Oh, the water in the ditches?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So not in, I mean, where they laid the tile, where the, where the big intake comes up. So that's the pipe, they're full of water. So how are they gonna get, are they gonna come from the downstream up the blacktop and then cut? Cause there's no way they're gonna be able to go through that blacktop.
From the west, you're saying?
So they drain that water. Cause originally they were gonna, you know, like last week, they were gonna try to cut through the blacktop, but it's too wet. So evidently they're gonna have to come from the west and drain that before they can.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah. They'll have to, they'll use the new system to help drain it. Yeah, we run into that through the years where there's a big pond and they have to get up to it, let it drain for a day, dig further, let it drain. It'd be that kind of thing there, but it should only be a couple of days delay, hopefully.
Who's this?
That is.
That's the, the pipe that we're talking about?
Yeah, that's.
Rasmus?
Yeah. Yeah.
You can see it comes with some force through there.
Yes, it does. Look at how it's eroded, a pond, I would call it.
That'd be a pretty good middle pond.
Yes, yes.
Really good.
Yeah.
So this is the one that we, you Rick, you had mentioned, a possible tanker.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's the spot. And, and that's the one where Bruce was talking about the, the, the pipe don't line up even anymore. It's, it's a mess. And some of the pipers is so deteriorated, you can see the reinforcing in the concrete pipe. It's just gone.
Pictures.
Yeah, so, but.
Did you raise the elevation on that a little bit then? She did work? As far as the height of the field crossing or not really, or so the bike?
No, the field crossing will stay the same height. Yeah, I think, yeah.
There'll be enough cover over it.
Yes, it looks like a nine footer worked fine and still have some cover on it.
I still would like to see us put a stake, like right there, there was a tree right where the.
Oh.
That tin whistle that came out. If you, and you know, once the thing gets overgrown with stuff and the grass is tall for the next cleanout, if you just had a stake with a reflector on it somehow that they could, the guy that's operating, we know it's there, so we don't hook it and break it off and causes another X amount of dollars for.
Is this old plants? I'm trying to make.
This is the same one going backwards.
Oh, yeah, there, sure, there's the pond.
Mm-hmm. I think we could make a little fishing hole right there.
I'll bet you're gonna listen to it.
Oh, that's all, yeah, that's all kinds of goofed up there.
Yeah.
There's your pipe reflector, yeah. One like that, so they're not issue with.
No, no, when it's obvious.
The non-obvious, buggered up ones that.
There's some spots, like there was one we should dig out just a little bit, restore the bottom width. Yeah. Some of these areas get pretty restricted.
Did I have three before? We didn't see that crossing on there, did we?
We seen just a little bit. We didn't see the crossing though.
Yeah, and you had a tree up there.
You had a little bit of tree, it was just the start of it, but we didn't see the field crossing.
There's the pond.
Yeah, we were trying to show that last time, I think. You see the four bay, we call it, where to catch the initial silt.
So this is right next to the road, wow.
Yes. That one looks big there. And they'll access that from the road, little to the right and up the hill a little, as far as future cleanouts. The goal is to have it so long reach can, can reach in there and clean out silt.
So once that fills, it'll just run over that like a spillway?
Yes.
Over that rock?
Yep, so just maintain drainage, but, yeah.
So then the water through here will be controlled?
Yeah, by the bigger structure we're coming to.
By the bigger structure at the bottom.
Yep. And be some good fishing holes there in the future. You can see the, the widest riprap above the, or, it takes care of the water line erosion.
Well, the two or three, whatever buried inches from, I've seen one side of the county was almost six inches to four.
Oh, okay.
That would help put the initial water in there.
That's looking east on far side, that's looking west.
There's Mark's home place.
Yeah. And that's the riprap down below the outlet pipe and below the emergency spillway. That's where there was concern for a lot of washing in the ravine.
That's what the rock is for the spillway, right?
Yeah. And the, and the, at the water line on the dam, the water side of the, of the structure. The big ground structure you saw was the control structure where it had, the water has to come up and drop in.
Drop in.
So it controls the normal depth of the pond.
Keeps the height of the pond, right?
Yes, yes. And then we've got a design, so it'll fluctuate almost four feet during a big storm. It'll come up, but then gradually go out again. Just to help that surge. I'm sure I told you guys, the, our guy that we have operating this most of the time gives me a bad time. The engineer training all his life to run this, you know, video games, yeah.
So this goes back, but weren't we gonna cover the grate on the other side with the bigger grate to keep the?
Yeah, and I don't know where that stands with this.
I don't know either, but it's still left in place.
No. Whose responsibility it would be, I guess, is.
At the secondary roads probably, cause that's where it's located.
Up on the other side of the road from that.
On the south side, maybe on Gary Knave. It's right along the buffer strip that we planted.
Right.
So, yeah, there's kind of an assortment of, of the projects.
No, I think we just, the hydro seeding ones, we see that before?
No.
Is that Rick Peterson did?
Yeah.
Now, this would be south of Renwick, right, three forty seven?
Yes. There you can see the upper part of the bank with the coloration on it. That's the material that helps holds the seed in place. And that's the area where they had to bench down because nobody had a, a long stick to.
Be able to reach it.
Yeah.
That's a long stretch.
It is. They did a good job with it, come back to the back real well. Again, good contractor to work with. There's their hydro seeding outfit right there. They switched what they had on, headed on for a trailer, just cause what they had originally wasn't working for them very well.
Do they know they're in movies?
I think so. I'm pretty sure they do.
Are they getting pretty good success with that seed taken on?
It's a slow growth and they're checking with their supplier on that.
Well, I'll bet you what, one of the things is difficultly is trying to get it to grow in that clay.
Yeah, the dry ain't the best soil.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
But.
This definitely hasn't suffered from lack of moisture here lately.
Very true. We suspect that moisture was part of the issue, because down closer to the water level it was growing.
Took off better, yeah.
Yeah.
When was this? I didn't see a date on this properly. It was dry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, dry and clay isn't a good combination, but.
No, no.
That is a good, that is a good method of getting it on there.
Yeah, yeah. Like he was flying in the channel here, I didn't realize he did that. The drone does have an automatic sensing device in it, so it will not fly into anything.
Well, it doesn't run into stuff.
Hovers.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Good idea.
And if the battery starts going down, it automatically replies back to you.
Oh, huh?
Yeah.
Well, if you ever get a mine detector kid can't do it, I have a grandson that's a wizard.
Yeah.
Got a six year old that'll take care of it.
He practices it daily.
Yeah, you're right, Rick.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
But this is very good though.
I, it's great to have, you wanna go back and look at something, it'll be in YouTube available. Yeah, we just keep coming up with uses, like I say.
It's with the grate, it's pretty simplistic, but it's, it's very good.
And the drones have gotten much easier to fly, they tell me. One of our engineers in the office bought one two or three years ago, gave up on it. He couldn't fly it. But now, they, they, they're telling me they're much simpler off.
Awesome, thank you.
Very good.
We'll let you know other stuff that we have, if you wanna look at it. Sometimes, some of these will be worth taking some of your time here.
Well, this could call to our attention, even if you're not here, Trish is, certainly knows how to.
Yes, she's got all figured out.
That's one of the good things.
She'd be flying with him, Nick.
She wasn't guaranteeing me it would work, but she got it figured out, so. Well, it's nice to have it up there.
That's very, very good reference.
Thank you very much.
That'd be a record for eternity too.
Yes, yes.
Good thing of mine, yeah.
Anything else?
Um, nothing official. I've got some stuff from Iowa State, I guess, on farming and cost, that I'd like to distribute to you guys.
But I mean, obviously you're gonna, for what most time.
That's your trip back to Colorado.
Uh.
I need that full, except for a lot of miles.
Every year, every two months. Some of the projects have been done both from the get-go, Rick mentioned that.
Well, and they specifically said, just look at that.
I know, so not limiting you by any stretch, but we'll get that in short order.
There you go, exactly, yeah.
And that's fair for both of us.
You can have it.
I just want to look at all the possibilities.
Yeah, there you go.
Get it all out of the table.
Okay, I think we can go out and drain it, unless you have something else for us, Trish?
Are we, and I know we talked about it before, hopefully this winter, we're gonna be able to put together some type of meeting like we did last year, OXFO.
Yeah, I think we should.
I don't know what our numbers are for existing ag wells, but I know that our number still is consistent with the ability if there's funds from the state. We need to keep trying to squeeze to get whatever we can. So I'd like to figure out what our number of closures versus keep pushing forward, so we're, you know, if we. The way that fall looks, we keep pushing fall back, thinking we're gonna be safe, but, you know. January, February, sometime in there, we would like to put a stretch together instead of a similar meeting.
I think it's a great idea, yeah.
Proposal of whatever we have left, we can make it. Cause we wanna be standing there when the state has the money.
Information for Mike to take back to the legislators too, to, to, to afford the money.
So. I'll keep top of your head, how many do you think we have in here?
We're, we're closing three here, basically, shortly.
Are we under?
We're under ten.
Ten?
No, around ten anyway.
Yeah, around ten.
So they're still.
Well, cause there's, isn't there like seven on that one?
There's seven on that one spot, yeah.
You know, and I'm gonna approach that a little differently this time too, because if the legislature can come up with the money, the, what costs will be left to the landowners is no more than other districts are going forward with. So there's a chance that a project could actually go forward on those and close them, rather than go try to restore wetlands.
So there's a chance that a project could actually go forward on those and close them rather than go try to restore wetlands. Wetlands are great, but it's hard to get that all done too, so, um.
Is this the one you're talking over by Gilmore, along the highway there that where we looked at going north?
Yes.
And it was unbelievable number?
Well, and that number's not as bad as I first thought when I went back and looked at it. Uh, like I say, you've done projects since then that has cost the landowners that much and they went forward. So I'd like to present it as a, as a, an option to at least be given a serious look.
What are they, thirty-five to fifty in the state of Iowa? More than are there?
Oh, what Mike say? I think it's about, I think it's.
Not a lot.
Yeah, it's not a lot anymore.
But if we have ten and there's say thirty, that's still a third.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Absolutely. I think the meeting is a great idea.
Yeah, that just gets back to the expediency. Yeah, it was a good meeting last year and it's just to push all the.
I'm sure Mike Corland would be glad to come again.
Well, if we, if we are willing to spend a half a day like we did, um, and at least introduce it to the guys that have it. That there's an option, there's still hopefully money out there to win-win for Humboldt County. We got to figure out a way to make it work, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Keep it moving.
Yep, absolutely.
We'll, we'll, we will do that, very.
Yeah. All right.
We've touched on that, whatever resources we need, whatever we have to do, let's get this DD two interest thing resolved.
Well, I'd just.
Whatever it takes and let's put that at the forefront.
Right.
Bruce made a very good comment. There is other things going on, but that. That's got to get off the back burner to the big front burner and that's got to get resolved. That's a, the back issue that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Agreed. I would like to motion to go out of drainage.
Thank you.
Second, third, fourth.
Eight for second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of drainage, back to the general session. Well. We're going to have to take a short break.
Recession.
Recession. Turn that off, make sure I turn it back on.